Being seven o'clock, like to open the meeting for June 17th, 2020. Like this open up an open forum. Anyone here for open forum?
Actually, I just want to make make a note that as Pacu Red right lecture has gone to be board of selectmen that Ross Lemanski is now acting as our chair. Until we go to a full book, who will be our permanent chair. For what's taking a lot of days, we're getting in on the meeting.
Okay, that will be once we get a full board, right?
Correct.
Reorganization at that time. Okay.
Right. It's now it's going to be advertised starting tomorrow for the positions. Alicia has expressed interest and submitted paperwork to request to stay on the board. So providing that the board of selectmen choose to keep her on the board and recommendation of the planning board, we will still be looking for an alternate member.
All right. All right. Agenda item up for seven o'clock is the 61A parcel release for the Jennings Brookfield Road.
Yes, this is a for the Jennings Road extension where they are looking for the the next part of the project. Assuming a little over 17 acres for the town Jennings Road Extension. So they are requesting release from 61A. And so the planning board would make a recommendation to the board of selectmen that to have the town purchase or not purchase the property. This is part of the previously approved subdivision. So I imagine that the board is inclined to say that they're not interested in purchasing the property.
Do we have a motion to act on this or not?
Is there any reason that the town wouldn't want to purchase that property? Would it be useful for anything? Or I doubt it, but.
No, I mean, it's already broken up into a boss and there's some lettings and open space already created as part of the subdivision. The board of selectmen are going to be acting on it at their next meeting. But they have nobody at any this time has expressed any interest in the project, the property.
Okay, I move that we do not recommend purchasing the parcel and release it from 61A.
Do we know how big the parcel is?
It's approximately 17.61 acres, I believe, nine one acres.
Okay. I second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Gene Vincent, aye.
Don Clay, aye.
Ross Lemanski, aye.
Into Zoom. If you click like Zoom, you click join meeting and it'll say enter meeting ID.
So Brendan, you're not you're not on mute, Brendan.
All right. Not being seven, 10 yet. Do we have anything else that we could discuss? Randy, for a minute or two in the meantime?
Well, I have a couple of items that I was going to put under other business, but I can bring a couple of them up now that we can discuss. First one, I believe everybody's received a copy of the proposed policy on decommissioning bonds. So I know you got it late in the day today, so I don't know if anybody wants to act on it tonight. But if any had any questions or comments about it, if you want to act on it tonight, you can, but I didn't know if you want to wait and discuss it and vote on it at a following meeting. Did anybody have any questions about that or issues with the language?
Yeah, Randy, I just have one small comment on page two in the first paragraph. You've got planning board a regularly scheduled meeting. The bond will be amount of $100,000 per megawatt of solar ray. And you have, I think you meant 100,000, but you missed a zero there. Per battery for each battery in an energy storage system. So I'd like to reword that for each storage unit, not each battery, because in those storage unit, there's probably but a few, at least a few hundred thousand batteries. So per storage unit, not per storage battery.
Storage unit.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we want to define any storage unit as a certain size or, you know, because who knows what what they can come up with?
Well, actually, I want to because they're, I'm sure different sizes based on the capacity of them. We could go with the same sizes that were proposed by Zero Point. They have, you know, a certain dimension of, I believe it's 40 to 50 feet long by X feet tall and X feet wide.
Yeah, let's put that in there as a definition for a storage unit.
Okay. Okay, I also had another one where as a result of the virus, we received this right before the virus happened and it hasn't been acted on yet, but we have a request for extension. This is for 55 and older housing Stafford and Center Depot Road, Charlton, Mass. It is for a special permit for 55 and old over housing at Center Depot Road. They're requesting it was approved April 20th, 2005. They're now requesting a one year extension, which would be from April 20th, 2020 to April 20th, 2021.
Is we acted on the subdivision plan earlier this year, I think. Is this for the the development or the subdivision?
This is a 50. This is a separate one from the one you were talking about previously. That was the Rockaway Realty Trust.
No, no, I thought we acted. I thought we had a subdivision extension for the development off of Center Depot, but I could be mistaken. I thought it was brought up in an earlier meeting.
Does this have a name?
The Peaceful Woods one, I believe.
Peaceful Woods, that's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah.
Have we done nearly extensions?
We see the letter on March 12.
Okay, either. Yeah, I thought we had acted on this already, but but either way, I'll make a motion that we approve a one year extension for Peaceful Woods.
Second, Gene Vincent.
Staying. How those in favor?
Aye. Yeah, can we?
Yeah, I don't think we have a quorum to be able to do this then.
Okay, then I will hold off and see if somebody else signs finds in there.
Okay.
Okay, one other, it's actually not an agenda item, but a question came up about the treehouse driveway entrance. They had requested a field change and this had happened over the course of the winter and I take full responsibility for this, but they had submitted for a field change for the driveway entrance as everybody is sure aware that it's happening at this time. They had required to get, they needed approval for the field change prior to the issuance of the mass DOT permit. That was done, I had issued the approval of the field change on December 30th, 2019. So they could get the mass DOT permit issued and it should have come before the board for a vote. And it was not done that way. And as I take full responsibility, that needs to come back before the board. And I know the project's half complete by now, but at our next meeting, Treehouse is going to be coming before the board for another field change for a different part of their project. And so they will be open for discussion with anything in reference to that driveway entrance at that time. Mike Andrade also did review and approve any of the changes that were done to the driveway entrance that were part of the site plan on the property. Some of the workout on Route 20 was not part of our purview.
So it is kind of a big change to their current entrance from what I've seen from the construction. It would be good to look at those plans and see how it's going to affect traffic. And the traffic has been a big concern for most of the citizens in town for quite some time. I'm hoping this improves that situation, but it would be good to take a look at what they have for plans before the board. I think the board should should take a look at it and should vote on it.
Okay, I have a copy of the plans. I'll be happy to supply them to all the board members. Basically, they are making a slowdown, pull off lane coming eastbound on Route 20, but they're also realigning the road and putting in a left turn lane on at the entrance to Treehouse in order to get people out of the traffic lanes while they're turning. But I will provide a copy to the board of the plans that I've been, I have here.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
Yeah, Randy, also, could you check with the police department? Because I could have swore they went through the the process through the select board to make it illegal to take a left hand turn on a treehouse heading westbound on Route 20. To see if that is still an enforcement that they have on.
Andrew, can you can you mute? Thank you.
Just Randy, if you get a chance, you check with the police department to see if they still have that a moving violation for taking a left hand turn on a treehouse. I know that part of that redesignment of their entryway shows a left hand turn exiting Treehouse heading westbound on Route 20. If you don't mind.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. All right, being a little bit past seven, 10. I'd like to check with Dawn and Gene. Is if they have, we have a public hearing coming up. I know that it is a for the Public Safety Building here in town. I just wonder seeing how the circumstances are, how you feel about having opening this public hearing with being via Zoom.
So, you know, my feeling is this is this is a pretty hot topic in town and to handicap the 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 public. By holding these in a Zoom meeting, I think it's going to be very difficult. I'd like to see this be pushed off until we can meet back in an office and we can allow public in. It just seems like a difficult thing to do for public interest anyways, over a Zoom meeting.
I agree.
All right, Randy, do you have any other information to add to that?
Well, if you're considering opening the meeting tonight, this is one of the times when we have a timeline that we have to work with. We have 65 days to open a meeting. In this case, we see the check the application into the clerk's office on June 1st. So that would put us into August as far as the opening of public hearing. But we do have a meeting scheduled for July 15th, which would be 45 days. So it's well within the 65 days. The issue is closing the public hearing is we have to close the public hearing within 90 days of opening it. So if we opened it today, we would have to close the public hearing on September 16th, which gives us three meetings to hear this application other than tonight in in closed public hearing with the determination. They have to make the decision within 90 days according to our bylaws.
Okay, but if we don't open the hearing tonight and postpone that till July, we can do that and the clock won't be ticking?
That's correct. You would have to open it at the July meeting and then you would have to close the public hearing and make a decision by our first meeting in October, which is I believe is October 7. You would have until that obviously could be done beforehand, but that that's how long it would take. But you would be required to close it and make a decision by December 6th, September 16th meeting if you open it tonight.
Yeah, so I, all the more reason I feel.
We only have one meeting in, yeah, we only have one meeting in July and August.
Now, we receive any correspondence from Graves as far as peer review back yet?
No, I've actually spoke to Mike Andrade as of today. He hasn't had enough to to complete his review on the application.
Yeah, I don't think we should open a public hearing until at least we get some input back from Graves because that that'll severely handicap him too. Yeah, so to put this off until our July meeting and discuss it then and we can open the public meeting. Now, has this been advertised? I'm assuming this has been advertised.
Yes, it has.
Okay.
What we would do in fairness to anybody is that we would readvertise for the July 15th meeting because we are not if if the board chooses not to open the public hearing, I want to make sure that we notice properly for the next meeting.
I'd like to readvertise this and I'd also like to set up a way where, you know, we could submit feedback from the community and from the town without having to attend to the Zoom meetings. It's it's it could be an inconvenience for some people. Some people may not have the the access to a computer to be able to do that. So if we advertise, set up some sort of feedback through either email or or through through regular mail or through the town hall planning office in the advertisement so that people know that there's another way to do that other than going online on the computer.
Okay. Well, as of, I believe if we're staying on track after July 6th, the town hall will open to the public. So people will be able to have the opportunity to come into the planning board office and view the plans in person, person online.
Correct. Do you know if we'll be able to have a meeting with public attending?
I think that's still up in the air.
Still a near. Okay. I'm all for postponing this because there's so many factors in here with Graves, no report from Graves yet. And maybe by our July 15th meeting, we'll be able to see people in public and we can display everything properly and handle everybody's questions. At this point, I just think we're rushing it a little, not rushing it. But I don't think it's to our advantage to open it tonight.
So I'd like to make a motion, we postpone opening the public hearing for the Charlton Public Safety Facility site until our June, July, sorry, July 15th meeting.
Second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Don Clay, yes.
Ross Lemanski, yes. Gene?
Gene Vincent, yes.
John Smith, yes.
Oh, John. Hi, John.
Hi, John. Nice.
Little technical difficulty, sorry. Randy, are these online, these plans posted on our website yet?
Yes, they are. They're on the town website. If you go under Planning Board, even though the title says it's under construction, you can go to the left there's a column on the left that says plans and applications online. The first one on the top of the list is this project. It has the application, the notice of intent, it gets put sent to the DEP and a full set of plans.
That's fantastic.
All right, moving along to our 720 item, the acceptance of Zero Point Development Battery Decommission Bond for Coburn Road Solar Site Plan and Ozgood Fitzgerald Site Plan.
Now, I believe everybody's received a copy of the decommissioning bonds from Zero Point for the two facilities or three really, it's Ozgood Fitzgerald. They have hoped that we'd discuss a meeting as surety bonds in the amounts that had been agreed to with the planning board.
Yep. So at the time, we did have a good policy in place and this is what what was kind of suggested to them at the time or this is what they thought was suggested to them at the time was a surety bond. So.
Right, the whole discussion on the policy was really after the fact.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any comments on it?
I don't know. Sorry.
Yeah, Laura, you were going to say something?
Um, well, the form, I think I've I've reached out and we've decided and I thought we had some support that 25% would be cash that would follow the parcel and the remaining in a standby letter of credit. And this would eliminate the problem that we've had with bonds expiring when the payment wasn't made. And with 30 of these, I think we were all in agreement. It's it's kind of a nightmare for the town hall to follow because they keep selling them. It's hard to know who owns it. Did anyone reach out to the finance team?
So Randy, you might want to talk about your, you know, just the the proposed planning board decommissioning bond policy that you sent out. I'm not sure everybody was familiar with it. I know the board members are. So that was kind of planned after the discussion with Zero Point. And unfortunately, I think we were late on getting that for this one. I would propose going forward with that plan. I think it's a good plan, but to go and ask this developer to go back and replan their surety bonds now, I know that it would be, you know, inconvenient at the at the least. I think moving forward, we need to go with with a better plan and go with a 25% down in cash and and policy and 75% policy after that. But I don't know if we can, we can do that at this point and hold this project up anymore.
I mean, I don't know if legally we would have an issue as far as trying to implement a policy that we haven't, you know, put into place yet. Going forward, yes, once it's voted on by the board that this will be our policy for the 25% and 75% will be fine. But to do it at this point, as much as it would be nice to do at this point, I don't think that it would be proper to handle it that way prior to having the policy in place.
Well, couldn't this be a procedure because you're setting precedence? So if you allow this to go through, they could claim that they've been grandfathered under, say, old zoning or grandfathered because you didn't have a policy or procedure. I, the money being so big.
At this point, if any project, just as these did, because they came back before the board would for the energy storage systems, they reopened the application for the site plan modification, which we had, you know, the attorney determined that because you're reopening it, gave the planning board an opportunity to revisit the decommissioning bond amounts. So it's considered almost like a whole new application as far as decommissioning bond. So moving forward, if somebody else comes in for energy storage or some type of modification to an existing solar facility, the planning board would at that time, providing we have a policy in place, enact that policy for any type of decommissioning bonds we have. So actually, because they have going to be handled as a one one, I'm trying to think of the proper term here, but you know, one at a time, and this isn't just going to be an umbrella that they will all be able to be given the we will be able to use the policy to for each application.
As they come forward with a new site plan modification.
Correct. Because we can't go direct to on anything that's existing, but if they come in for site plan modification, they open themselves up to they're following the new policy for decommissioning bonds.
And they'll know this policy.
Now will be our policy. We'll make sure that they're aware of it upfront.
Yep, okay.
I can understand that and I respect that. However, at at the hearings, the last time we were with them, we mentioned that cash and they just wanted a surety bond because that's the cheapest. It's it's like $400 a year. This is a multi-million dollar company. It's just an insurance policy. So I just I'd like to be on the record that I'm really disappointed and I hope that it doesn't fall through the cracks when these bonds don't get up re re-upped every year. So.
I completely understand because it is a lot of time for the town to follow these every year to make sure that they're renewed and got, you know, if the property changes hands, that to make sure the bond's updated to reflect the new property owner, you know, it ends up being a lot of work for the town, the planning board staff. So, you know, if we could eliminate the work, we'd be happy to do so as well. But in this particular case, I don't think we can.
I think I think we're all in agreement there. It's just what can we do at this point? And I think this discussion where we decided to go with this was after the public hearing we had with with Zero Point. I think they had left the room by the time that we had really gotten down to the roots and discussed this as a new policy going forward.
Question, Randy. If a new owner comes in, does that open it up where we can look at that again? I mean, just.
That's a question I really can't answer. I don't know the legality part of that question, whether we legally can do that just by changing ownership. I think the trigger point was actually the site plan.
Site plan. Okay, if we could, if if a new ownership would trigger it, that would really be good for us. And then that way we can have everybody on the same page with the decommissioning bonds.
Right.
We can't do it. I guess we can't do it. I don't feel it's right to go back to Zero Point and say, hey, you know, we changed this after we talked about it and now you have to do that. I just, I'm sorry. I don't feel that that's right.
When when the ownership changes, they're going to have to have the insurance policy in the new owner's name. So like Deb Chicorini said, it's it's almost impossible to figure out who owns what lease. So I I understand what you guys are doing, but they were there in the meeting when we talked about it and they turned on the sweetness and this is where we're at. I think because of COVID, I think we could because no one could really meet. But, okay.
Do we have an official policy saying, is that something we should put on a to make make sure that anytime that a somebody comes in for site review or modify claim modification, the policy is to review the bonding of the project? Do we have that in writing somewhere? So that is our policy?
Could we put that in the new decommissioning policy? Because we haven't voted on that yet. We could vote now.
Yeah, it doesn't say that in the way the way I wrote it, but I could amend it to say that so that everybody's aware if they come back before you know, the board for a modification, they would be subject to this new policy.
Yeah, just so it's not clunky next time and to just so it that's our rule, you know, and that that those terms are the rules and there's no interpretation otherwise or but I I don't know. Do we have to post that, Randy, in order to make people aware we're going to do that? Or is there something we can do now?
It's more of a policy decision. The board should vote on that policy. But it's not necessarily be need to be posted.
Right, now that we have a quorum who can vote, can we add that to it and then vote on it tonight after we get done with this?
I don't see why not, right?
I don't see why not either, but.
Do you want some time, Randy, just to make sure your wording is right? And so we're, you know, say next meeting or unless there's.
Well, I mean, honestly, I don't think we're expecting any applications for this between now and then. So I would be more comfortable to just review it again and make sure I get it right and have a board, the board have an opportunity to look at the amended version. And then we're all okay with it. We can vote on it at the next meeting.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
If everybody's comfortable with that.
Could you run that, could you get approval to run it by town council? Just because of who we're dealing with and the number of attorneys and the number of lawsuits across the state? Just to be sure that we're not missing something that they can interpret a different way? I think Andrew's on the call. I'm sure he'd okay it.
I have to request that through the board of selectmen. I can't just contact town council because time is money. So I forget.
Yeah, it's up to the chair of the board of selectmen to give you approval. But whereas we're dealing with the largest industry in town, I think it would be okay. I'm hoping. we're dealing with the largest industry in town, I think it would be okay, I'm hoping.
I mean, Randy wasn't.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. As long as the board of selectmen give me permission to do it, I'll be happy to send it to town council.
Yeah. I mean, this is kind of, like you mentioned in your opening on this, the proposed bond policy, it's similar to the one that they, that Water Assessors has with Millennium, right? So they're almost, so it's kind of.
Yeah, exactly. That's basically going with the same type of policy as they have in place now.
So, I mean, I'd hate to see us waste money on town council, but, I mean, he's there for a reason, but checks and balances, I understand that. But, I mean, may just run it by him.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion on this, acceptance of the battery decommission bonds for Coburn Road and Ausgood Fitzgerald Solar.
I'll make that motion.
I second it. Gene Vincent.
All right, all those in favor?
Don Clay, aye.
Gene Vincent, aye.
John Smith, aye.
Ross Lemansky abstain. All right, now, we have the, also, the acceptance of Zero Point Development, the Coburn Road Landscape Guarantee.
Yes, they had gotten to their landscaping company a guarantee for one year warranty on the plantings that they were putting in place, which is what we require in that bylaws. So because the landscaping company has provided the guarantee, I did not feel it was necessary to have a separate bond. It's just a double guarantee on the product. The landscaping company has provided me with the guarantee to Zero Point, so they are covered for a 12-month period once you're planted.
Do we have a maintenance plan on that also? Is the landscape company going to do the maintenance to make sure that that stays watered and?
Actually, I can't answer that question. Maybe possibly somebody from Zero Point can comment on it?
Yes, I can. This is Pete Fortywood, Zero Point. Randy, if you look at the guarantee that I gave you, it also has listed required maintenance for one year.
Okay.
As well as soil additives, watering, guying the plant.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Peter. Do we have a motion to accept the landscape guarantee for Coburn Road Solar?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Don Clay, aye.
Gene Vincent, aye.
John Smith, aye.
Ross Lemansky, aye. All right.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 7:30. Zero Point Development Acceptance of Butter's Agreement at 78 Partridge Hill Road, per Condition Number 10 of the Coburn Road Site Plan Decision. I believe you recall this, a butter where the telephone pole and the transformer is on Partridge Hill.
This one, as one of the conditions of the approval of this project, is they would do landscaping for up to $5,000 for the butter on 78 Partridge Hill Road. The butter in Zero Point came to an agreement that the butter would rather use the funds and do the landscaping themselves, which Zero Point has agreed to, and I did get a confirmation from the butter that she has received the funds of $5,000. So I believe that even though Zero Point isn't doing the work, they have met the condition of the approval.
Okay.
Whether the butter actually uses it for landscaping, we'll never know, but they have met their condition.
Can't come back to us either.
No, definitely can't. All right, do we have a motion to accept this?
Motion to accept the butter's agreement at 78 Partridge Hill Road for satisfying Condition 10 of the Coburn Site Plan. Move.
Second, Gene Vincent.
All right, all those in favor?
Don Clay, aye.
Gene Vincent, aye.
John Smith, aye.
Ross Lemansky, aye. All right.
Just moving right along.
That's right.
Yeah, the one thing, just, oh, wait. We're back to the other business.
If I could just interrupt for one second, this is Pete Fortywood, Zero Point. Why not, one item that we have with Kurt Meskis is that he is still waiting for a notice to proceed. Do you think that's something we can waive since all the construction is pretty much wrapping up?
Well, I mean, that's typical that he requires that, but I didn't know he hadn't asked me for it. I mean, you're at the point now that we can supply that, so now with the decommission bond, so I can actually give that to him tomorrow.
Oh, perfect. That's excellent. Yep, no, that works for us. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, is that for both sides, or just the Coburn Road?
He's requiring that for both sites when we file the new building permit.
Okay, gotcha. Just want to be sure, because since we got two on the table.
Yep.
Right. The one thing that we did get to vote on before, I don't know if John, being here, that he can vote on this now?
Yeah, I think we can bring that up.
Oh, yeah.
By the way, John, congratulations on a hard-fought battle.
You nailed it, John. You nailed it.
We didn't have any doubt in you at all. We knew you were going to do this.
Thank you for your support. It was a beautiful day on Saturday to be out, that's for sure, so.
Voted for you several times.
It was my first time not standing out there in three years. It was kind of nice to have a weekend off and.
Who could tell who was voting with the masks on, you know, or?
Right.
It was great. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, John. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Good to have you on board.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anybody has any, people they might know might be interested in being on the board, they'll be advertising us tomorrow. It would be nice if we could do it, make a recommendation to the board of selectmen by the next meeting, if we had some.
Laurie's still on? Oh, Laurie is still on.
What's that?
I said, looks like Laurie's still on.
Laurie, are you listening?
She's not saying anything.
No, she's not listening, okay.
Oh, Laurie, okay.
All you have to do is send an email, Laurie, and let us know you're interested, and let Randy get some help forwarding to the rest of the board.
I do love this kind of stuff, and being on Board of Health so many years ago, I do remember a lot of the history on things, but no, thanks. I can be more of a pain in the neck this way.
Well, we have the opening, and then we also have the alternate, which isn't so involved. You don't really have to attend every single meeting, but.
Wow, that's kind of like, that's like being a juror, and then after listening to the case, you get picked out of a hat. But thank you for thinking on me, but, thank you.
You'll let Paul know, too.
Okay.
Was Alicia interested in, you know, staying on or not?
Yeah, she's all interested in Pat's seat, I believe.
Okay, yeah, Alicia actually submitted a letter requesting to be considered for the full-time position now. So a full member, so we'll be looking for an alternate.
Great, well, that's super.
All right, do you have anything else, Randy?
Oh, yeah, we got that.
I don't think we did vote on. Is that extension? No.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the extension, because Ross had to refuse himself, okay.
Ross, is that up for sale, though? Did I see that that's up for sale, or?
Yeah. Why not? Right?
Yeah, if somebody's got the money to do it, right?
Yep.
Things are selling right now, that's for sure.
No, they are. Busy out there.
Okay, maybe we ought to let John know what it's about, so that he can.
Yeah, John, this request for an extension of the 55 and O community on Center Depot Road, and so I don't have the name of it. Did you call it Whistling Woods?
No.
Whistling Woods.
So it's an approved site plan that they're looking to extend?
Right. It was originally approved in 2005. The expiration was 4/2020 that expired. They had submitted the request prior to that, so they're requesting an extension till 4/2021.
I make a motion, we extend it for the year.
Hold second.
All right, all those in favor?
Gene Vincent, aye.
Don Clay, aye.
John Smith, aye.
Ross Lemansky abstain.
Okay.
Motion matters.
Yep. All right.
Yeah, so our next meeting, there's been discussions of possibly having in the senior center, so we can do some social distancing, and let the public in. We haven't figured it out yet, because we do believe there's probably going to be some public participation involved with the public safety facility projects, so we're trying to give a place where we can give some people some room to come in.
Yeah, Heritage might be an option, too, since you can probably spread out a little bit more there than you can the senior center.
Well, that's.
In the parking lot.
Yeah, right, work for the town meeting.
Bring your bugs, Ray, right?
No, and I meant really, we didn't need bugs.
As a public person now, Alicia, can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
So if we were to hold a meeting, I mean, I'm sorry, if the board were to hold a meeting at the senior center, or Heritage, or whatnot, would our board then be responsible to have Surf Pro or one of those come in and sanitize the building, since the school, presumably in the senior center, aren't letting people in? Because I know that's a major concern in some other groups that I'm on, is the liability that if you do let the public in, who's responsible for the cleanup afterwards, and on whose dime does it have to fall?
Yeah, that was my first thought when somebody suggested it to me. Because I think that's probably going to have to be done, so who's going to take care of it?
Maybe we should check with the town administrator and find out.
Right, yeah, we will.
If we're in the senior center of the town, would you be willing to pick it up?
Yeah.
Dexter Hall is another option, too, by the way.
Oh.
With the library.
I think that's a better option, because it's a lot bigger. And I think that with the Public Safety Complex, you're going to have a lot of the public safety people flooding in there, and it's going to be important. And then you're going to have their supporters. And I'm thinking, maybe not a 508, but something probably a little similar.
It could turn out that way. And at least with the Dexter Hall, you can kind of contain the crowd to that one hallway elevator and top room.
Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, we'll explore our options and keep you posted.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Randy?
That's it.
All right, does anyone else have anything, Don, Gene, or John?
I don't.
I don't. I'm just, just a reminder, send out that treehouse information, and we can look at it and talk about it in our next meeting, too.
Okay. Do you want to see the plans electronically beforehand? You know, I can scan them and send them.
Yeah, yeah, electronics best. That way, we're not looking at it for the first time.
Right, okay, no problem.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Motion to adjourn?
Randy, you'll have that, you'll have that bonding information, hopefully, so we can just move on that on next meeting.
Oh, yeah. I would either send the revised version tomorrow, or the early next week, so that everybody can look at it, make any comments on it, to make sure I have it right, and also try to verify to town council, you know, if I can, if we satisfy with the language in you as well.
Okay. Randy, I sent you the one change that I mentioned. I emailed that back to you. I'd like to look at it over a little bit, too. I mean, I think there's still some openings in here, but, you know, at one point, does the, when does a decommissioning kick in? I mean, it's, all it says is if they don't, if they don't decommission it, then we have to. Well, what, is there anything written down in this policy that says at what point is it considered no longer useful or acceptable?
No, there isn't. There isn't a solar bylaw, so I'll take the language out of there when.
Yeah, okay.
It hits a point of its end of its life.
Otherwise, they could just leave it there and say, yeah, we're going to decommission it, and just let it go on forever.
That is written in in the solar bylaws. We talked.
Yeah, yeah, it's not in this policy, though, so it would be good to have it in this policy, too.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the table.
Okay, second motion, and please note the time, it's 7:46, which is six minutes over our scheduled time.
Rob, what a great job you're doing as a chair here. You just kept us right on schedule.
We tried. We lucked out. We'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thanks, Ross.
All right, no problem. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Don Clay, aye. Don Clay, aye.
Aye.
Ross Lemansky, aye. You guys have a great night.
You, too.
Thank you, Randy.
Good night.
Thank you, Randy.
Hi, Laurie, thank you.
Bye, thanks.
All right.
Bye.